All right, are we ready? Good, thank you. All right, if you would all rise. Folks, if you wouldn't remove your headgear if you got it on. We begin every one of our meetings, for those of you that have never been here before, with prayer and the pledge. This evening, Alder Lady Sharon Will Mac is going to lead us in prayer, followed by Alderman Lou Coker is going to lead us in the pledge. If you would.
Please bow your heads. Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you so much for another wonderful day that you've given us, dear lord. Please guide us, go with us, dear lord, as we go through this meeting and make the decisions that are the best for this great city that we live in. Please be with those who are here, dear lord. Please go with us as we leave here. Keep us safe, keep us healthy, dear lord, and keep our eyes on you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. And many of you have heard me say this before, there is no comma in there, it is "One Nation Under God." So, we learn it with a comma, but there's no comma there. So, I've got a presentation to make, and then we're going to get down to the public comment here in just a minute, but I'll take first. And...
Yeah, I'm picking on you. that people serve more than thirty years. And we had the opportunity to present Lou and some of his lifetime story to the Mississippi Municipal League this year. There were over two thousand people in attendance, and he was nominated to be in the MML Hall of Fame. And I'd like to say they accepted you. And on behalf of the city of Brandon, on behalf of MML, on behalf of everybody in Brandon, we want to thank both of you very much. Because it is a, it's not a singular journey, and it does have impact on the family. And sir, we sincerely appreciate you very much, so please take it. So, that would be thirty-two years of service to the city of Brandon.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good job. All right, now we'll move on through our, who is on the agenda to speak? There you go. Okay. Yes, sir, the microphone's yours. If you would state your name for the record, and where you live, and...
Good morning. My name is Henry A. Wood Jr. I live at, in Brandon, Mississippi. And I want to talk a little bit about my great-grandmother. We all know that slavery was bad, and for both of us. I am eighty-five, eighty-seven years old, and I'm paralyzed on this side, so it's hard for me to talk a little bit, but I'll try to do the best I can. My great-grandmother lived at D-Lo. She was twenty-seven years old. As a Union soldiers was coming from Newton, they stopped at D-Lo. One soldier, Union soldier raped her and killed her cow, the only cow she had for her, feed her baby with. And they burned her cabin down. And then her husband was at war, Baton Rouge, Louisiana port. Hudson, he was killed, so that, they never did find his body. So, they just, it was just left her alone by herself. I want the black citizen to have their memorials, and I also want the whites to keep our memorials. That's, I believe that would be fair, wouldn't it? You know, the Bible says, "If you don't forgive, you won't enter into heaven." So, if you're a Christian, I forgive everybody, and they can forgive me. So, thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Lehrer?
Thank you, mayor, for letting me come tonight and speak. It seemed like in the past few weeks, there's been several comments or several issues related around the statue. First, I want to cover traffic. The statue is causing tremendous amount of traffic, so they say. Well, you know where I live, and I live on the east end of, I went east end of town, and I have to go through that eighty Lewis Wilson red light every morning, just like you do. And the time I come through, there's a lot of people that come up Mary Ann to the statue to try to get around, to beat the traffic at the red light. Then that just bottles next to everything. So, as a suggestion, I would say make Mary Ann a one-way south. Pointe d'exter, all she is, and Black Street's been cut off because of the businesses downtown. And, but people, you've got to understand, Brandon is growing. The more people we have, the more traffic we're going to have, and we're just going to have to get used to it. That's just all there is to it. Secondly, I do want to talk about the statue itself. One thing I want to bring out is that the men who fought during the Confederacy during that war, wasn't all native-born American people, or men. And I've got a list here I wish to share with you of the nationalities that served in that war. You have the Irish, which was the biggest amount of people, Germans, the British, the French, the Poles, Canadians, Mexicans, Italians, Cubans, Belgians, Hungarians, Russians, Swiss, Danes, Chinese, Native American, which consisted of the Choctaw, and the Cherokee, and the Creek Nation. The black men also served, and they were mainly served in the early part of the war as laborers and servants. A late-war initiative put the black man by the Confederacy armed in order to fight. The point I'm trying to make is, all these nationalities I just read to you, including the black man, suffered and died, and that's what that statue is honoring, is the memorial for all the fallen, them and everybody else included. Now, to talk about moving the statue, I just don't see why we spend tax dollars on moving the statue, and then they want to put it in a more perfect place. There's no more perfect place than where it's sitting right now for the past hundred and twenty years. They want to put it in a cemetery, the Confederate Cemetery. Well, I think we all know in this room here, there's a lot of people who dislike that statue, possibly even hate it. Can you imagine the vandalism that would take place? It's not patrolled, you know, like some of our streets and businesses are patrolled. It's kind of hard for a police officer, I guess, to go down in that cemetery and make a little run and come back out, just to check on it every now and then. Where, is in the middle of town, where in the middle of town, it has been safe for a hundred and twenty years, where everybody sees it, and it's displayed proudly, and I think, I'm all in this for saving history. This is part of history. If you move it, you're changing history. I don't want to change history. One more thing I'm going to make a comment on, and you're going to die when I tell you this. There's a business downtown called The Gallows. If we moved a monument and let certain groups of people change our history, are we going to make that establishment, change its name from The Gallows to something else? Thank you for letting me speak.
I don't see Mr., I don't see Mr. Bob Odom here tonight, so we're going to scratch through him, and we're going to go to Ms. Pam Johnson.
I think I'm big always, bigger than... My name is Pam Johnson, and I live in Rankin County with a Brandon 39047 zip code. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. I think you can tell that this topic is important to many Rankin Countians, whether we live in Brandon city limits or not. First, let me say, despite what the gentleman said earlier, that I don't think anybody in here can out Confederate heritage me. My third great-grandfathers wore the gray. One of them walked home wounded to Covington County from the Battle of New Hope Church in Georgia. He died in his wife's arms the next day. She was pregnant with their twelfth child. Another grandfather died at Beauvoir, when it was a nursing home for Confederate veterans. I even had an uncle who died at Gettysburg. He was a doctor. I have no clue why my kinfolk thought it was a good idea to sacrifice themselves to a cause devoted to keeping people enslaved, and also destroying the United States of America. Now that we've established, now that we've established my bona fides, I humbly request that the Confederate statue be removed from its current location, and placed in the Old Brandon Cemetery, where it can stand century over those who fought for that cause. It should be moved because it is a hurtful reminder of Mississippi's leadership in a war to maintain a wrong-headed status quo. Not to mention what it symbolizes to our black citizens, whose ancestors literally bore the brunt of it on their backs. No, we do not need a granite glorification of a bloody vicious past, impeding traffic and economic growth and community in our county seat. Those days are long gone. Thank goodness they are. And I do have one thing to say to the board. As a former alderman myself, I just want to remind you that even Jesus was not a hero in his own hometown.
Someone on that back wall has hit that light switch, and the lights began to dim. Mike, if you could hit the top button on there and brighten them back up, please. It should come back up. Just be careful about leaning against the wall back there in the back. All right, okay. All right, Mr. Tom Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and board members. I'm Tom Evans. I live at 307 Creston Cove here in the city. I'm going to throw you a curveball, I'm going to talk about something completely different. And I hope something that we can all unite on tonight, that's what I believe. And, so let me share with you, if I may, a little incident or circumstance, or experience that I had last week on Wednesday. Wednesday morning, headed back home down I-20. And just as I passed the downtown exit, what's that, 54? Is that correct? On the right, on the interstate, was a sedan, a car, a small car, that had stopped, and two elderly people had gotten out and were surveying the car. And I realized when I came by that they were having problems. So, I went on down to the East Brandon exit, came back down Highway eighty, and went back up to come in behind and see what was going on. It was about ten-thirty in the morning, and it was hot. It was about ninety-three degrees already. And so, I pulled up, turned my emergency flashers on, pulled up behind them. The lady had got back in the automobile, and the gentleman had opened the back of the automobile and was plundering around looking for apparently tire tools. They had had a blowout in their right front tire. And so, I asked the gentleman, I said, "Could I help you? It's hot, and is there something I can do to, you know, help you do this?" He said, "Well, I've got tire tools, and I appreciate your help." So, we drug out all the tire tools and things that was necessary to, you know, jack the tire up. And as we had done that, and began to take the lug nuts news, one of our patrol officers pulled up behind my vehicle and appropriately parked his vehicle in a manner, and turned his emergency equipment on to provide some protection for us. As we all know, being on the side of the interstate is a very dangerous place. Cars going by at seventy miles an hour, when there's a police officer present, and maybe faster than that when they're not. And so, he came along and did that, and came and joined us, it was Officer Phillips. And he inquired what was going on, and said, "Well, they've had a flat." And they had shared with me that they were going to Morton, Mississippi. They were from Louisiana, going to see their brother. So, it was a husband and, excuse me, a brother and a sister. And their brother was in hospice and dying from liver cancer, and they did not expect him to live through the week. And, and so, I did not share that with the officer. I just said, "Well, they've had a blowout, and we're trying to get the tire fixed." And so, he observed what was going on there and helped. And then, another officer came and parked behind him and turned their emergency lights on. And we felt much more secure, chief, having them there with their lights on, the traffic would move over and slow down enough that removed some of the danger that we felt there on the interstate. But it gets a lot better than that. And so, as this old man was down helping that old man trying to get the tire changed in this sweltering heat, Officer Phillips stepped up and says, "Let me do that for you. Let me take care of that for you." And stepped in and took over. He literally pushed me out of the way politely and respectfully, and relegated me to an observer and picture taker. And so, he began to immediately help him with the tire and took the tire off, and then we put it in the back of the car. And then Officer Green stepped in and did the same. I'm not going through all the details of it, but chief, what I'm sharing with you today, your police officers in this sweltering heat, with all their cavalier on, their outfit, and all the things that they took, carry on their body, stepped in and helped this elderly couple change his tire, in fact, changed the tire for him, and took care of it, and put air in the tire because it was a little bit low. Now, this is not the kind of stuff you see on the six o'clock news at night. You never hear about these things when things like this happen. But I wanted to share that with you, board, tonight about these police officers and what they've done, and tell you about their conduct. Their conduct was one of compassion. They saw what was going on in this elderly couple, and probably not having the ability to do this on their own, and with a lot of empathy, they just got involved and changed the tire. They did that, I know, also in the interest of safety, trying to get everybody off the side, the outside of the highway, but they didn't have to do that. And I appreciate them very much doing that, Officer Phillips and Officer Green. Now, I know you're law enforcement kind like evidence, and I've got evidence. I've got pictures of them down there changing this tire. And I'm going to give that to you tonight, chief, because I'd like, if you would, when you have the opportunity to express my appreciation to them for what they did, and they went above and beyond the call of duty. They don't teach that down at the police academy. It's something that comes from the heart. But chief, I believe it goes deeper than that. I believe it goes to you. And I appreciate you and what you have brought to the Brandon Police Department. You've brought integrity, you have put professionalism in place, and accountability. And more than that, you've brought together a feeling and a culture of community. Before the, it's not us and them, the police officer are part of who we are as citizens in Brandon, Mississippi. We all feel together on that, and that's something we should all unify in.
All right.
So, I appreciate what you've done and the leadership that you have brought to the police department here in Brandon, Mississippi. So, I'm going to give you these pictures and let you do with them as what you may, but God bless you, thank you for doing that. Thank you for, board, for allowing me to share this experience with you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Now, this will be the last public speaker for this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Angela English, and I am the Rankin County NAACP president, but I'm also a native of Rankin County. I'm here to give you a more personal depiction of what this statue means to us as African-Americans. The last public hanging in Rankin County, and I will say "public hanging," occurred with my great-uncle being hung. His name was Will Mack, but his given name, birth name, was Will Macklin. My grandfather gave an account, he witnessed the hanging at the age of fifteen years old, and my grandfather died at a hundred and two in nineteen ninety-six in his right mind. The depiction that he gave and the description that he gave was very graphic. And this depiction was given to John Grisham. And we all know John Grisham, a time-to-kill, a great author. Went to school at Mississippi State and Ole Miss, and got his law degree from Ole Miss. What we have over here is a picture of my uncle, great-uncle being hung. Not only is he my great-uncle, but he's, his grandchildren are here. If you would, stand up, please. All right, on the morning of November twentieth, nineteen oh eight, a young lady falsely accused Will Mack of assaulting her, a young white girl, she was about fifteen years old. And she picked him out because he worked on her father's farm as a sharecropper. But at the time that she was accusing him of having assaulted her, he was in another county, Marshall County. He was sentenced and found guilty. He cried and he asked the man who he worked for in Marshall County to please tell the truth and tell them that he was not there, he was with him, with tears running down his face. The man said, "I'm sorry, Will, I can't do it." So, he was sentenced to hang until death, and he did. He hung, was hung on July the twenty-third at twelve forty-two PM with hands tied behind his back, shoes removed, black hood over his head, noose around his neck, as depicted in the picture. Rankin County Sheriff Walter White pulled the lever, releasing the trap door beneath Will Mack. At twelve fifty-eight PM, AG McLaurin, the local physician, pronounced him dead. As if that was not enough for his family to witness, they took him down, they tied him behind a pickup truck with a chain, drug him, and they watched his eyes as they were already protruding, and his tongue was already hanging out. His eyes were bulging out, and his tongue was protruding. They tied him to the back of the pickup truck with chains and drug him around and around and around the statue that exists, until the skin fell off his bones, the Confederate statue that is in downtown, that same statue. They drug him around for what my grandfather said seemed like an eternity, and they watched as the skin rolled off his face, off his arms. And he said, "That's a day I'll never forget, for as long as I live." He said, "There were so many white people there, and they were having a party. They were cooking, they were having a picnic." He said, "It was children, it was men standing all on the walls." And the building that you see in the back of the picture behind him is the Rankin County Jail. Now, that's what we remember about the statue, as passed on by my grandfather. It symbolizes white dominance. Furthermore, the continued presence is seen as a painful reminder to the families of many, not just Will Mack. He was the last public hanging, meaning there were many before him. Will Macklin, descendant, some of whom I just told you, are present in this very room tonight. See this as a representation of hatred. If we intend to promote Brandon and Rankin County and the state of Mississippi as a fair state, then, and it's fair to all of its citizens, all tax-paying citizens, then that statue, which to us has been weaponized, and it's a murder weapon, because after they drug him, they hung him from that statue for two to three days, so that they could see his body, and the buzzards flew around, so that they could pick his flesh. We should be tired of Rankin County getting a bad name. This has been, we have been approached for a movie to be made. John Grisham approached my grandfather and other relatives of Will Mack for a book to be written, and he was, he's writing the book. We've already had the Goon Squad event. We keep hearing about all kinds of heinous and horrific things that are occurring. We need to stop and start reconciliation processes. And the only way we can heal is to remove the salt that has been poured into our wounds for decades. We are tired, and we want the statue removed. It's dead, it's a concrete monument, the man that's on it is dead. Dead things belong in a graveyard. There is a graveyard that that needs to be put in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you all for being civil, and I appreciate that. And we will continue at every one of our regularly scheduled board meetings to have six people that want to speak as we go forward. And now, it is up to us to continue the work of the people. So, we will begin working now through the agenda. I want to let you know and let the board know that we have, we're publicizing our budget going forward in the next year, and I believe Mary Ann came up with a schedule board, you have a copy of that, Marcus, if you want it, you got it. But we're publicizing in the paper on August the sixth and August the thirteenth. On our next regular scheduled board meeting, Mr. Baker, we will recess the board meeting until the public hearing on August twenty-first, when we come together to vote on the budget. Then we'll adopt the tax levy, and no, there's not an increase in taxes, and conduct the public hearing necessary for the fiscal year twenty-six budget. And then on September second, we will adopt the final fiscal year budget as we move into our next budget cycle moving into next year. So, make everybody aware of that. All right, now we'll work on, work our way through the agenda. Yes, sir?
Six or five people spoke.
There were six. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, we added one right here, this gentleman right here on the front spoke. So, I had one not show up, Mr. Bob Odom, but you could say I took some time too, so I spoke and awarded this man, so, okay?
Did I count the people?
Pardon?
You said you spoke.
I did, yes.
Did I count the people? You all counted.
I may, yeah, I took time at the, we're not going to get into that. I had five people down here, we added one, which was six for tonight. So, we're going to continue to work on through the agenda. All right.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve the regi- Motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of July 21st, 2025. All right, you're going to take them both at the same time. All right, motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. Harry Williams. Any discussion or question on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, we could, we could hold it down just a little bit, please, in the back. All right. I'm going to begin now with Mr. Mike Monk. And Mr. Mike, if you would, take the center podium here. I've known Mike for, gosh, 16 years before he was Executive Director of the Central Mississippi Planning and Development District Board. I invited him to come. I know you've heard me talk a lot about grants through MPO, safety grants, traffic grants, overlay grants, building grants, and anyway, there's an opportunity coming up, and I thought it'd be better that you hear that coming from him rather than me for a change. So, yes, you're up. There you go.
I got it to work.
All right, and all these board members see the same thing behind me?
Okay, good, good.
So turn it over to you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Butch. Appreciate it. Board of Alderman, appreciate being here tonight. I think y'all have probably seen some of my coworkers, Gray Oates and some others, talk about some of the planning and work that we do. I think one thing I want to leave with you a little bit as a background of what all we're involved in and actually help you to see that we're doing a lot of different things. Just a little background, I'm not going to take very long on a lot of these slides. I know y'all have a full agenda. But we are one of 10 Planning and Development Districts in Mississippi. We were formed in the late '60s. Purpose was to address problems and issues that don't stop at political boundaries. They go beyond. That's why we are a regional-type agency. We are one of, like I said, one of 10. We have a board of directors that governs our operations, and those are mostly made up of local officials. One thing that we do is an association of Planning and Development Districts. We have an annual conference every year in Biloxi, and you see the date for next year. Great opportunity to come and see what all Planning Districts do across the state. Now, getting into the actual central Mississippi area, you'll see where we have seven counties in our region. We have 35 municipalities. We function, we're part of our involvement with local government. We have local dues that is part of our membership in the agency. They're very small. When you consider that we have about a $35 million budget, we only get about $232,000 from all of our seven counties and 35 cities. So a very small amount, but it does help to match some of the federal programs that we're involved in. 32-member board of directors. It is made up county and city officials. All right, some basic functions. This is where you may start to see some things that you weren't aware that we have done in the past. Of course, like Butch said earlier, grant loan assistance that we do. Data management. We're a census data affiliate. We have a lot of different census data available for special needs. Sometimes we have economic development-related items where they want to know how many people and really a demographic profile within, say, five miles, 10 miles, 20 miles of a point. We can do that. GIS mapping, that's Geographic Information System. Everything now is not hand-drawn. When I first started working, all these maps were hand-drawn maps. Now they're all computer-digitalized using GPS devices and that type thing. Of course, community and economic development. We support a lot of projects. When I came to work at CMPDD, my job was mainly doing this type of work, writing grants, helping support the economic development. You know, each county, sometimes cities, have an economic developer. They are the people on the front lines. We are there sort of to support by providing some grant assistance. Medicaid waiver, we have about 3,000 clients in our seven-county area. These are, these are people who are Medicaid eligible but would otherwise have to go to a nursing home. So we have case managers, nurse, social worker that visits these clients monthly. They help to line up meals, home-delivered meals, and other services that they may need, transportation-related, and really this helps to save Medicaid a lot of money because they are able to remain at home and have some care provided. And then technical assistance, that's things like our planning program, transportation planning. I'm going to get into those a little bit more. Workforce development, I'm also going to cover a little bit more later. But we also do small business loans. So small business loans through our SBA 504 program. We are a community development corporation as well. It's called Central Mississippi Development Company, and we make loans across the state, really, for small businesses. And then we have a very, very good service with our aging services through our area agency on aging. So that's also home-delivered meals, congregate meal sites, transportation, legal services, a litany of different things that we do with aging. All right, moving into planning. These are some of the more detailed. I've already covered a number of those, but I will say that the drone photography, we have actually two FAA-certified drone pilots that we use, and that helps us to enhance some of the planning work that we do in our communities. It's almost become, a comprehensive plan used to be just a document. Now it's more of a, something to help promote the community that we're working with, and I think we use that very well in the CMPDD area. Many parts of the state do not have that access. Anyway, those are some of the detail. I've covered most of that. All right, comprehensive plans, you see on there, we have Brandon, where y'all had just recently adopted that comprehensive plan, but we have done over 80 since 2000. We do these a lot. You won't find any other Planning and Development Districts across the state that are involved in this. Sometimes we do work outside of our district because we have some good folks. I think y'all have met them and know that we're fortunate to have their capabilities with planning, and I think that helps to serve Brandon very well. All right, on this one, of course zoning, that's what we're transitioning to with Brandon now to some degree. I don't, I think we're getting started on that. Is that right? Yes. But anyway, some of that, we have done, you know, zoning over 55 of those since 2000, quite a bit. I was going to show you real quick this, this little graphic here, it just plays through. This is flora, and you see where now we use the Geographic Information System, GIS mapping, and we layer in zoning, and layers like that. We connect those parcels back to a GIS map where it will actually bring up the ordinance section related to it, which is really good for the citizens.
This is the guy you want to pick on, right here.
Right there.
That's the one you want to pick on.
So that's just an example of what can be done. It's really a great tool. It helps to better inform your citizens of what the zoning requirements would be. All right, moving along. Wanted to let you know of this date because this is really for Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning administrators, and elected officials. Not only do we write these comprehensive plans and zoning, but what we try to do is help you better implement these tools. So we are having on October 10th, 8:30 to 12 at our office just down the road off Highway 80. We're having some training on comprehensive planning and help you better understand some of the legal parts of that, why it's important, and I encourage you to make arrangements maybe to come if you want to. So certainly some of your staff.
Does MML give CEUs for that?
No, not on this. No CEUs on this one.
I'll work on that.
You'll work on that.
They should.
I think you've got some insight on that, so. All right, hazard mitigation planning. You know, with FEMA, many years ago, they started requiring that you have a hazard mitigation plan in place if you are to receive hazard funding after some type of storm or event, and we work with our communities to make sure that y'all stay eligible for those funds. Those have to be updated every five years. So we work with our communities making sure that's done.
And Matthew Miller works us hard for that, but board, you need to understand we would not be eligible for things like community development block grants and a variety of other things if we didn't keep it up to date.
Right. Master planning, that's more site-specific type things, but it's also reservoir being a multi-county-type area, residential area. We did a master plan for them, Tugloo College Campus, and then we did a master plan there in Simpson County for healthcare planning. All right, MPO, that's something that is very important right now. Mayor Butch Lee is our chairman of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. You see where under federal regulations, any urbanized area over 50,000 population is designated as an MPO. It is a forum for cooperative decision-making regarding transportation needs, and across the country, you'll find that there are over 400 POs throughout the country. There are only four in Mississippi. You've got basically Memphis, which spills into DeSoto County and a couple of counties in the north. You've got Hattiesburg, which is a smaller MPO, and then the Guff Coast, and then, of course, central, the Jackson urbanized area. This is a map depicting areas that are eligible. You'll see Hines, Mason, Rankin County are included in that. It does not go beyond those counties, but all of those within there are eligible for this transportation funding. Now, we have 17 municipalities, and you'll see those listed there, but Brandon is part of that. Key planning documents, we're working now on the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan to help us better plan for needs down the road. We do a transportation improvement program there in the middle that's updated every few years, and then every two years, we do a unified planning work program. Those are required documents that the federal government requires to keep us eligible for The thing I wanted to talk most about tonight is call for projects. We divide our call for projects into two areas because they're two distinct funding sources. Transportation alternatives are your bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Now, you see on there, August this month, we're starting the process of calling for applications for projects. You see that number, that's $7 million. It's not a typo. We have never, as long as I've been at CMPDD, which has been 33 years, we've never had that kind of money for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. At the most, we've done is $2.5 million at one time. So we've got a lot of money out there for these transportation alternative projects. I know the city has taken advantage of that in the past and done some great work. This is an opportunity for y'all to consider maybe putting an application in. Those will be due end of September, and then we move into the next phase, which is actually surface transportation. That is your streets resurfacing. That will be safety, like signalization, turn lanes, and even widening new roads. So there will be $27 million that we'll be putting out for applications in November, and those will be due end of January. So something to consider, and I know the MPO will be making decisions on that in a couple of weeks. All right, real quick, some of our grant work that we do. We were founded, actually, the Planning Districts were set up through a grant from the Economic Development Administration. They are our longest partner when we were first established, and we are still a part of EDA. We have to do a plan each year to keep our cities and counties eligible for EDA funding, but those are things, a lot of industrial parks that you find around the country, a lot of those were initially, the infrastructure was put in through EDA. And then another partner with us is Mississippi Development Authority. As Butch said early in the beginning, CDBG is the big program that comes through there. Very good program. It has a lot of flexibilities, but it's great for water and sewer-type work especially, and it's great to take advantage of that as much as possible. Another one that came along probably about 20 years ago is the Delta Regional Authority, and they started out as a very small program, but they have started to really put out some very big grants, like $1.5 million-type money. So we work with our communities to make sure that you can leverage as much of that as possible. All right, workforce, I'm just going to say, because I know I'm running pretty late there. So, okay, all right. Workforce, you see we have 17 counties. We have Wynn Job Centers that we support. There's three in our area and three in the southwestern part of the state. Something we're doing is something virtual where we can, through this website, someone can talk to a career coach to help them with getting a job. Robin Parker lives in Brandon here as our director. It's like she always says, "We don't train people to be poor. We're training you to get a very meaningful job with good pay." Career coaching in high school. Brandon has a career coach, and we've got 47 throughout our 17 counties. I think this is laying a great groundwork for helping high school kids get into vocational-type work as much as possible, which will pay off with good pay later on. So we're involved in the high schools now. That's it.
All right.
Was that too painful?
No, thank you very much.
Thank y'all for your time very much.
You know, it used to be you were an expert with a briefcase if you were 10 miles away from home, or you're an expert.
Well, you know, I had to shorten this a lot, Butch, because when you saw me, I was, it took 40 minutes to go over a lot of that, so I shortened it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time out of the evening. All right, board, we will take B through E together. Request permission for Georgiana Keenan to travel to Vicksburg, Mississippi to attend the 2025 Governor's Conference on Tourism, October 1 through 3, and authorize payment and registration fees and all related travel expenses. C, consideration to advertise in the 2026 Mississippi Tour Guide to promote tourism in the city. D, request permission to travel to Philadelphia, Mississippi to attend MML Small Town Conference October 15th to 16th, 2025, and pay all related expenses. Board, that'll be from me, but MML from this point forward will pay all my expenses going forward. All we'll have is I'll be taking my, my loving Trailblazer, 2007 Trailblazer, I'll be riding in it maybe, but that would be the only expense that the city would have. E would be consideration to accept the bids. This is an important one, board. Consideration to accept the bids received today regarding the Civic Center renovation project. This is step one. An award to Gilith Construction Company, LLC, has a best bid received in an amount of $248,700. authorized mayor to sign all related documents. Mr. Baker, I have an email from the architect making that recommendation to us. No, I just got it on my phone a little while ago. I knew we'd had to have it. Okay? All right, motion to approve of Mr. Luke Coker. Second, Mr. Chris Vincent. Any question on those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, Ms. Mary Ann.
Good evening, everyone. May I take these together? Consideration to rescind the action taken at the regular board meeting on July 21st regarding setting the date of the public hearing on August 14th and instead setting it for a week later on August 21st. Consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521 and other law for and related purposes. Authorize the mayor to execute the same and improve payment of all show-related expenditures. Nappy Boy Touring LLC and City of Brandon Artist Agreement, Cash Nation LLC and City of Brandon Artist Agreement. Consideration to adopt an ordinance of the City of Brandon, Mississippi prohibiting the purchase- Consideration to adopt an ordinance of the City of Brandon, Mississippi prohibiting the purchase, possession, distribution, sale, or offering for sale any product derived from the hemp plant designed for human ingestion and/or consumption that is not approved by the United States Food and Drug Administration and codifying the same as Chapter 7, Section 7.7-2 of the Code of Ordinances for the city. Consideration to approve the quote from Metro Mechanical and the amount of $15,812.50 to replace the existing damaged fiberglass shower unit with new tile. Another quote was received from JL Roberts Mechanical and the amount of $28,504. Consideration to approve the docket of claims for August 4th, 2025. Fox Everett Claims released on July 29th, 2025. Electronic fund transfers for July 2025. Presentation of quarterly reports for the quarter ending June 2025 as filed with the State of Mississippi Department of Finance Administration. Senate Bill 2948, House Bill 1353, House Bill 603, Senate Bill 2468, and most, I think it's supposed to be most F.
All right. Board, do we have a motion to approve items A through F under the chart?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane, second by Mr. David Ferris. Any question on any of those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want me to take these together?
Yes, ma'am. And one of importance there that Mike was speaking to earlier, folks, was number, what, number letter? The community development block grant in here. I saw it somewhere.
Uh, the fourth one, D.
Yep, okay. Rock on.
All right. Consideration to declare an emergency repairs to the traffic signal at Highway 80 and Value Road due to a traffic accident. Approve the invoice in the amount of $10,930 from Lewis Electric and authorize payment of the same. Uh, consideration to declare an emergency, the repairs to the various lift stations listed below. Approve the invoices from Harvey Services for each site and authorize payment of the same. We had four sites, different times, just different repairs. Consideration to approve the invoice in the amount of $27,188.39 from Hydra Service for emergency repairs at the Richland Creek Lift Station and authorize payment of the same. This is the final invoice at this site. Uh, number, well, letter D. Consideration to approve the following related to the Diamond Emerald Sewer Rehab CDBG Project. Spread on the minutes the MDA Environmental Clearance and Authority to use grant funds for the project. Permission to develop plans and advertise for bid the project. And approve a professional services agreement with Benchmark Engineering for Design and Construction Engineering for the project and authorize the mayor to execute the same. E, consideration to approve Pay Request 7 in the amount of $103,841.41 from Thornton Construction for the Marquette Road Multi-Use Path Project and authorize payment of the same. F, consideration to approve the utility adjustments and denials pursuant to the memo. Consideration to release the LOC for Glen Arbor Subdivision Phase 2 from Thornton Construction Company. They have met the requirements to release the LOC. And H, consideration to approve a professional service agreement with Lawrence Printing Company for monthly utility bill printing services and authorize the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you, Ms. Carley.
Thank you.
When will that go into effect? They start printing our utility bill?
Um, we're hoping the September bills. They do have to get all the formatting together, so it's possible that we'll have to mail the September bills from in-house. But September at the earliest, October bills at the latest.
All right, board, is there questions on A through H, or is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. No questions, board? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carley. Thank you, board. All right. Mr. Joey, so now you saw where your city planner is at, huh?
Sure I did.
All right. They were there waiting on you.
Yes, I'm ready. I'm ready. I might be sick. Good evening.
Good evening.
May I take all of these together?
Yes, sir.
Uh, adopt an ordinance of the City of Brandon extending the temporary moratorium of residential subdivision development with exceptions, which was adopted on March 6, 2023. Uh, request permission to surplus a damaged vehicle. It's a 2007 Ford F-150. VIN number ends in 90601. Set public hearing for August 18th, 2025 for consideration of application 25026 for conditional use for secondary detached dwelling. Permit request from Larry Holden at 510 North Street, parcel number 19H-1, PPIN is 33466. Uh, D is set public hearing for August 18th, 2025 for consideration of an application for conditional use to operate an Airbnb per request from Rankin Roots Properties LLC. Andy Harris for 939 South College Street, which is parcel number IB21. And then set a public hearing, this is the last one, set public hearing for August 18th, 2025 for consideration of dimensional variance. Uh, request for KFL Investments at parcel number H8160, PPIN is the 88636. This is 917 Marquette Road. Uh, the applicant is requesting a dimensional variance for a building height. It's an ORC office and research zoning district to be allowed to exceed the 40-foot height limit to 55 feet, which is proposed.
All right. Thank you. So we're setting three public hearings for the 18th. All right. So is there a motion to approve those? Motion by Mr. Luke Coker, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. Any comment or question on those, board? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. I have two items tonight. Can I take them together, please?
Yes, sir.
All right, first item is the accept the resignation of William McIntyre from his current position as a police officer from the City of Brandon Police Department effective August 15th, 2025. And the second one is request permission for Officer Cody Moles to travel to Biloxi, Mississippi to participate in the Dynamic Police Training Conference on September 24th through 25th, 25. All expenses will be funded by the department's training budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve, board? Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, board. Thank you, Chief.
Take all four of mine together, sir.
Yes, sir.
Request consideration to authorize a travel to Corinth, Mississippi for training at the Crossroads Class and authorize travel expenses for Sergeant Adam Denson, myself, and Division Chief Jerry King, October 8th to 12th. Item number B is request consideration to authorize travel and conference expense for Captain Travis Khan and Lieutenant Brendan Gaunt to travel to Biloxi, Mississippi for the 2025 Mayor's Conference, October 12th to 15th, 2025. Request consideration to destroy old and absolute broken equipment. Item number D is request consideration to approve the attached quotes for the annual maintenance on the engine as ladder truck and ladder truck for a total of $9,175 and authorize payment of the same. Most of work completed.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve A through D for the fire department? Uh, we got a question here by Mr. Baker.
Number C, are we surplusing and selling or surplusing and throwing? I didn't get to the memo.
One more time, sir, I apologize.
On C, are we throwing the stuff away, or what are we doing with it?
Uh, I think some of it we can sell on GovDeals, and some we can probably, I don't even think you'll get anything for it. I mean...
Have you got it identified in your memo?
Uh, yes, sir. I did it in the memo. The radios, I believe we can sell on GovDeals. Everything else is pretty much just scrap.
Okay, so you only want to try to sell the portable radio and everything else needs to be thrown away?
Yes, sir.
Okay. GovDeals? Is that what you want to do?
Is that the one we use, GovDeal? Yes.
Okay, I just make sure I put that in the minutes. Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve, Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Any further discussion, comment? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, board. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Board, at this time, would like to determine necessity of being in executive session, retire to determine that, need a motion? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? All right, audience, at this time, uh, everyone will leave the room, and I'll come out and announce what we're gonna be doing, what we're gonna be talking about in executive session. Yes, sir.
I'm waiting until I get the, get the high sign.
Oh yeah, we, okay so we're back online here.
Okay there was, uh, the board voted to go into executive session as, as was announced to discuss potential litigation, the perspective acquisition of real property and personnel matters involving the public works department. There was one vote taken in executive session with regard to potential litigation.
All right. Thank you all for sticking around. Is there a motion to adjourn until the 18th? Got a motion in second? Uh, all in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Thank y'all for being here.